Let me put on the mics so the people in the back can hear you. Trish and Marcus. They bought a house in Erie. And I can't remember the name of the organization.
Okay, well, thank you. So what we wanted to do tonight then is go over our preliminary budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I'm just gonna kinda give an overview of where the numbers are. Deb's gonna get into a little more detail with each sub-recipient, and if we have questions about what each organization plans on doing, then we'll talk about that as well, so. But at a high level, as an overview, the good news is, our allocation went up, as opposed to last year. Our main component, which is the block grant itself, went up, you'll see on here, roughly ninety thousand. We also are gonna be getting a little more in home funding. I think it was about sixty, seventy thousand more, and then our ESG, which is Emergency Solutions, grant went up slightly as well, so. In total, I believe, was roughly four hundred thousand dollar increase over last year, so sort of reversing a trend that had happened for a while, and the last couple of years, actually, that trend has reversed, so. So that's good news, so. As we go through each category, whatever questions you may have on that, we wanna be able to answer for you, so. That's kind of a high-level look at the numbers. Deb, can I turn it over to you to start going over each category? Sure.
With that trend, I know I heard it was always going down, but what's currently hit up or do you have any idea?
Part of it is the tax bill from a couple of years ago, the tax cut included, from what I understand, included additional CDBG funding overall. So then when you increase the total amount, the allocation, then, as it goes out to the cities, each allocation would increase. But I don't have details as to what that was, but I believe, I believe CDBG funding had increased a couple of years back. It had been going down for quite a while, and so, yeah, at one time or another, I believe back in the early eighties, we were, what, about four million a year, Deb? Three and a half, four million a year?
Which year, which year did you say?
Well, going way back, twenty-five, thirty years ago, we had, we were three and a half to four million a year, so obviously in real dollars, but then when you adjust for inflation, too, you know, you're really losing ground.
Two thousand three, two thousand four, and two thousand five, we got four million.
So yes, it's even as recent as then, so. Yeah, it's good to see the numbers reverse a little bit.
Before we proceed though, it looks like the budget proposed for the next year, though, is gonna be cut overall, so do we have to have any exercise in caution in how these grants are allocated to any groups, like, sort of, don't count your chickens before they hatch, sort of?
Well, we try to, and, and yeah, and you'll see as we go through each sub-recipient, we try to keep the budgets fairly level for that reason, because a lot of times you'll have someone come in and request a much larger amount, but knowing that next year, you have no idea what this is gonna come in at, so we try to, we try to smooth that difference out. That's just one component, but we also look at, you know, the past accomplishments and their activities that they're doing, and some organizations have much better track records than others, so that all goes into consideration as well. But you're right, Liz, we have no idea from year to year, and it's kind of frustrating, but you work with what you get, so. Deb, you ready?
Okay, if you look at, well, Chris mentioned the available funds, which we are gonna receive, three million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. We received information from HUD that that's gonna be our allocation this year. We have five thousand dollars that is in program income, so the total for the fiscal year 2020 will be, let me see, we have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that will be reprogramming. That reprogramming dollars will be in the years that the funding that it comes out, so we actually have three point five million dollars, three point, three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Pardon me?
So Deb, if I can just jump in real quickly, and most of you probably already know this, but reprogramming estimate, those are unused dollars from prior allocations, so we pull all those years forward. You only have a certain amount of time to use those dollars, so if it looks like there's straggler activities out there, we'd like to pull them into the current year. So three, three years, Deb?
Three.
Three years of unused funds, so. And you're al, you're always, you're always gonna have some unused funding, because not every activity's gonna come right out to the exact dollar amount, so. I'm sorry, Kat.
I don't understand why they wouldn't use the money.
Uh, well, you know, again, this is spread out over three years and spread out over a lot of different sub-recipient, so if you're, if you're planning and budgeting on a certain dollar amount, and that activity came in slightly lower, then you might have a couple thousand dollars left over here, a couple thousand.
Do they give it back to you?
So over time, we only have so much time to use these, these funds, so we'll pull all that forward, and that's reprogramming income that goes into the new year.
And our contracts are actually for one year, from July one through June thirtieth, so if the funds are not expended by that date, we recapture them, or we have, we take them back.
There was that time you were under, like, investigation, like, we may have not been doing everything to the book, per se, is that beyond us now?
No, it's not.
No, it's not, but it is progressing. We had a call last week?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. We're getting there, I think there's gonna be resolution to this soon, but I don't wanna say anything yet.
As long as they're still giving us money, and maybe a little more money, that's a good thing.
It's a good thing, and we're working through those issues, some of those issues have been dismissed.
Good.
And we continue to fight hard. So that's kind of dragging things out a little bit, but we feel very just, we feel we have justification for what was discussed, and, you know, again, some of those have been dismissed, we're still fighting on some others, and we're gonna keep going, so.
Community college theory, I'll hold for next week. I know, I should check the news while I do this, but that gives us a little bit of time for people.
It's twenty percent of what our base allocation is.
That's just standard.
So we allocate our, you know, our time sheets, in other words, Deb's time sheet looks different than mine, because she spends much more time on this than I do, but you know, we do reasonable allocations for CDBG home and ESG, and we're allowed to reimburse, obviously, for administering these programs, reimburse the general fund, so.
Okay, so for, the first, that's the projects on the sheet, these are actually city projects, and so we're looking to allocate four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to curb cuts. We're still under the handicap decree, and so we have to allocate funding for curb cuts each year. Looking to do tree removal and planting, which is twenty thousand dollars. Demolition for properties that will be demolished, plus the demolition coordinator salary, code enforcement for the code enforcement officers.
Can we make control over the curb cuts?
Pardon me?
Curb cuts, I live in Glenwood.
Curb cuts are actually for the entire city of Erie.
That's, that's still the, that's still the court order from years ago, we're still replacing curb cuts, and according to engineering, we're not done, we have to continue to fund that.
I thought we were not gonna be done.
So it seems to be becoming more of a permanent fixture in this budget, but, you know, as long as we're under that order to do that, you know, at least we're able to utilize these funds for that, so. Sure. We are, we're allowed to reimburse our code enforcement officers for work that's related to HUD-related activities, slum and blight, so. The point that we wanna make here is that we continue to draw that portion of the budget down, because that's been scrutinized in the past, and actually, we met with our CPD rep, it was about six weeks ago, Deb, when he was up here.
About a month, yeah, we have a new CPD rep.
And he made it very clear that they continued to scrutinize code enforcement and community policing, and he said, "I'm gonna be continuing to look at your activities closely, and if it's not directly tied to the national objectives, then, you know, we're gonna continue to monitor you," so. We're trying to right-size that budget, where we think we have solid justification for that number, as opposed to just plugging a number in, and I think it's in our best interest to continue to draw that number down to where it really needs to be, and it's a shift we have to make, we didn't wanna make, but we're doing it gradually, so that it doesn't shock the general fund, but ultimately, we need to be where we need to be, and I think we're getting pretty close to that, so.
Chris, does that include hiring anyone new?
The portion that we are reimbursing the general fund, or?
This is, this, you wanna explain, they, they, so the code enforcement officers that work below Twenty-Sixth Street, right? It has to be low to moderate income.
And then also, it has to be, they have to go in deteriorating areas, it just can't be low-mob areas, the houses that they actually go in to inspect have to be deteriorating, in a deteriorating area.
So as they inspect them, they have to take photos, and then they have to document the houses that they're working on, they send that to HUD, they document their hours, and then we can reimburse from, from CDBG for those activities.
Thank you for explaining.
So it makes it difficult, it's difficult for code enforcement, too, because we have other areas of blight, other, other houses that need to be taken care of, and so this is an ongoing challenge for them, because there are other code enforcement officers that are doing work that we can't be reimbursed for. And, so it's, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, it used to be a much simpler approach, you could take an area of the city and assign an officer to that area, and justify that entire area, and now they're saying, no, each individual activity. So if they get called out for high grass, we can't pay for that. So it used to be simple, when you could assign a code enforcement office to Area One, Area Two, Area Three, and then say to HUD, these certain areas, we're gonna reimburse one hundred percent, they're not okay with that anymore, so they have to enter in each
Address, you have to actually have.
Case, each case has to have a justification, and so that puts more burden on code enforcement.
What do they say, say, get the house that uninhabitable? Do they make that call, or do they have to send somebody else out to verify what the code enforcement guy saw?
Well, our, our code enforcement individuals can make that call if it's uninhabitable.
So when it gets knocked down?
So like, I had a complaint today about a house, so I went upstairs, talked with Andy, gave him the address. So if that's in that area, they're allowed to go in the house, it's uninhabited?
Well, I mean, they're allowed to do it regardless of, regardless of if we're funding it, so that's, I mean, that's almost two separate issues. They should be doing that, and then if it's an eligible activity, we can reimburse that, so. For example, if it's an immediate hazard, it would be under slum and blight, okay? If it is in a certain, is that correct, Deb? I mean, if it's an immediate hazard, we can pay for that.
Right, every, I guess, house that they inspected, every house that they go to, it has to be tied to a house, it just can't be, like Chris mentioned, high grass, whatever they're doing, the blight or the deterioration has to be tied to a property, they just can't go out and say, "There was a lot of garbage out there," or "The grass was too high," they have to actually tie it to a property. And then they list that information on their time sheet, it has to be kind of descriptive, as far as putting the address, exactly why they were out there, and the number of hours that they spent there.
I mean, ultimately, you need to tie back to one of three main national objectives, slum and blight, economic development, or emergency, general emergency condition, so there's three main national objectives. If you can't tie back to one of those, so in other words, high grass doesn't tie back to any of those, they, we have to ultimately justify under one of those three national objectives, and then within those national objectives, they have further detail. So that's what we work with.
It all has to be low-mob, right?
Low, low money, yeah.
And what was the third objective?
Two questions, one, so this is being used as an offset for the general fund?
Yes, right, yes.
And it's been about three or four years now, but we actually added additional headcount in the code enforcement office that was to be paid with CDBG money, is that still?
Sorry, what, could you repeat what you said? You added additional what?
About four years ago, they added additional headcount to the code enforcement officers in the, that was to be paid with grant funding.
We're not paying for all of the code enforcement officers, as Chris stated before, we have certain code enforcement officers, based on where they go out in the area, based on what the complaint is, and how they do their time sheets, that's how we reimburse the code enforcement officers.
Yeah, the old way of doing it is, you would have officers assigned to certain areas, and you would fully cover the officer that has that area. We have to look now, activity by activity, so.
So do you expect that we will utilize this entire fund?
The two hundred and seventy thousand? Yeah, we're comfortable with that.
Well, I guess.
We'll spend well above that.
That's what they.
This is, this, this is all we, we will be able to reimburse for through CDBG.
Part of their reasoning coming to us, they don't have the resources to do, and I'll just put it out there, a better job. We're cutting there, I mean, last year, they were allocated three hundred and thirty-three thousand, we're cutting that by sixty thousand, and they're telling us we don't have enough resources, so if anything, you think this would either be the same as last year or more?
But we can, they can only be reimbursed for those specific kinds of thing, that's, that's been a change.
Which I understand that.
Actually, code enforcement would prefer to get completely away from taking CDBG funds.
Because of the restrictions?
It puts, it puts a lot of extra burden on.
All the reporting, they have to enter all that information into a database.
I think it said in the PFM report that code had difficulty with data anyhow, if I'm recalling the report correctly.
They don't use those.
No, I think that, everything has to go to HUD in a very specific way, so that's all in addition to everything else that they're entering into information, HUD can't take it that way. So they have to create another whole, yes, and it takes them a lot of work to do that. So they would prefer not to take any CDBG funding in the future.
I mean, it gets to the point where, and we know IG was here, they were talking about cases that they went out, looked at a home, said certain things needed to be addressed, maybe took pictures of it, and then wrote up in their case and in the report that it was addressed, but maybe didn't take a picture, like, a before and an after picture, so then HUD was scrutinizing that. So now you've got code enforcement officers that are going out multiple times, just to satisfy what HUD reporting is requiring, so. I, you know, I think we'll probably continue to have some dollar amount in here, because it's a reasonable amount, but we need to be, ultimately, we need to be at a point where we can justify that, and not be working up towards that number, trying to get a number of activities to get us to that number, it's too much burden on Andy. And, and, and really, part of the reason, too, and, you know, I should say this, but sometimes HUD will tell you that this is okay, and then, you know, six months later, they'll indicate that what was okay last year is no longer okay, and
It's very easy to do one.
You know, we're, we have that with demolition from time to time, they'll say that one activity's fine, another one isn't, so. Ultimately, it's better for code that we, that we we get off of this dependency of block grant funding for that office.
Money has to come from somewhere.
It does, but, but we're in, we were, we were in a precarious position with code enforcement and community policing, relied on such a high dollar amount. They've made it clear to us numerous times that that was not an appropriate level to fund this, and they continue to tell us this. So we need to get the right balance, and we're working our way there.
And the, you know, the majority of calls that they get in the summer are high grass, weeds, and garbage, and they can't get, we, we can't reimburse for any of that now, so.
That's where the summer help comes in, I'm gonna push for that this year, all that, summer help we hire to have a special unit to handle the high grass.
But let me, but Jim, let me go to your budget point, okay, 'cause we are, we are drawing down slowly with code, and so that affects the general fund, but if you jump down to street improvements, we made this pivot a couple of years ago, because that is an eligible activity that they haven't seemed to really have an issue with. So we're taking a couple hundred thousand from other activities, and we're putting in a couple hundred thousand, just in a different area, so it helps to alleviate some of the pain, putting it elsewhere, so. I just wanna note that, that, you know, it is a shift, but overall, in totality, the budget, the general fund, you know, we're trying to equalize that, so. You know, street improvements is an area where we feel comfortable that we can continue to have an elevated number, if you go back, it used to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred thousand, we're up over four hundred thousand.
I think one of the things that might, so not to labor how code enforcement is working in blight, it would probably be helpful to have a study session sometime. Scott Henry called it for me in Howard Bibb's Blight 101, although we didn't have a chance to finish our course, so this, that's not your responsibility, but I think to tie it into what, you know, Kathy Rozdick has talked about, you know, when I've asked about the housing court, and that is on the horizon, just so people understand what some of the, you know, you can just do this code enforcement, and then it doesn't, but you're, a lot of times, but the thing that, what's his name, you know, Gordon Mann was talking about, you know, taking a shovel and putting stuff over here, I just went to Blighted Property Review Committee, and every month, we go through these same things, well, these people, they got a quality-of-life ticket, didn't pay it, now they're going to the district justice, the district justice says, "Oh, here, you know, pay fifty bucks," they pay fifty bucks, then they're back again, so there are systemic issues that should be addressed, but it would be helpful for city council to have a, you know, an overall understanding of what some of those challenges are that are out there, so. So we can't, and, 'cause you guys aren't code enforcement, but, you know, that would be helpful, I think, for all of us, especially because we have new council people, and I'm a, now I'm sort of a veteran council person, I don't even understand at all, so.
Four years, you still don't understand that, believe me, 'cause it changes like God.
Changes all the time, yep.
Okay, and then we have the Summer Rec, that is actually a city project, they pay for operational costs at the Roger Young Pool out on Buffalo Road. As Chris mentioned, the street improvements budget is up to four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and four thousand dollars. Park and playgrounds is twenty-five thousand dollars, the community policing is two hundred thousand dollars, and our DECD admin is six thirty-four, four ninety-eight, and that's a twenty percent that we're allowed to take for our base allocation. We have the City of Erie Commercial Facade Program. The Redevelopment Authority did not request any facade dollars this year. We also have money listed for economic development grants, and that should actually be a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Not too tough?
No, a hundred and ninety.
So what would that grant be for?
Which one? To do economic development activities in the City of Erie. HUD is real big now on trying to do economic development activities, so we don't know exactly what, you know, the grants will be, or what we'll use it for, but we do have that line item there.
In, in discussions with, with the new CPD rep, I was CPD rep in Pittsburgh who oversees our region, and I, I tried to make it clear to him that I'd like to see us be able to pivot more towards active economic development with HUD funds, historically, we just haven't done that. And I want to have the ability to assist on a couple of potential large developments that may be over the horizon, that, you know, we don't know for sure right now, but I wanted to, to just carve out a little bit of funding here to help potentially with one site in particular, to get it over the finish line, if something were to come together, so. We can always reprogram these dollars later.
You say one site, what are you talking about, public housing or?
No, on the economic development front, there's, there's three or four major sites in the city that, that I'd like to, to see finally get over the finish line, and, and a lot of times, you need to have the ability to either guarantee debt, or come, come in with a grant, or a combination of both, and I wanna start building up that line item, and, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand's a start, but I would like to see us build that up a little bit further over the next couple of years. And then also with the commercial facade, this will be our second year for this, I believe we have one project, hopefully, that's gonna move forward with last year's funding. I think it's important that we have enough in there to do maybe one major facade project each year. Even with what ERA was doing, and John Mukman's program, there's still demand out there, and so I think we should also have internally the ability to do maybe one project here as well, so. Trying to slowly make a pivot towards more economic development with our block grant funding, that takes time.
Do we have an extra copy of this, does a report or backup, I don't know if we should?
Oh, well, that one, I don't know.
How you doing? I don't know how you do it, I, I used to be the HUD reclamer in this area years ago.
Okay.
With HUD, like you said, every time a new person comes in, the rules change.
They do, because what one director
Sees his way.
Sees as being acceptable. A new person comes in, and this is the case, this, this new person's coming, he's a fairly young guy from a different region of the country, where they did things totally differently, and came in, met with Deb and I, and said, "Here," and he was very, very blunt, very straightforward, and said, "These are the two areas that I'm going to continue to monitor and, and look at, and here's where I think you need to pivot to," and at the end of the day, it's their money. It's their rules, so. So, you know, there's no sense in trying to swim against that tide, 'cause you'll lose.
Okay, on the next page, we have the Redevelopment Authority projects. This year, we're looking to do ERA acquisition, fifty thousand dollars. ERA Housing Rehab, sixty thousand dollars, and ERA Housing Lead, two hundred thousand dollars. And actually, we have ERA Housing Services for twenty thousand dollars. That is where actually that twenty thousand dollars is taken away from that economic development grant, and the housing services is payment that we pay the Redevelopment Authority to assist us with their home program for our homeowner and our home buyer, when they go in and they inspect the properties. The next page is our public service activities.
Can I ask a question? The ERA demolition, did you answer that or not?
I did, I said, "That is ERA demolition." We did not put any money into ERA demolition, because the city already has it, demolition.
Okay, so, okay, it's piggybacked.
Well, and additionally, an issue that's come up is
I also wanna mention the fact that for demolition, eminent domain is not allowed per HUD. So we can't do any demolition that requires like the Redevelopment Authority taking of the property.
We're at a point right now where we're gonna have to identify how we're gonna secure properties before we take them down. Eminent domain is, they've, this email just came out a couple of weeks ago. It's not an eligible way to secure the property. So, once again, now we're gonna have to determine, it's gonna, primarily through acquisition. So, so until that's determined, we can't be funding demolition until we have a good way of securing those sites. We'll work through that, but...
Right. So everything that he's already acquired through eminent domain that he's ready to demolish?
Right.
We can't use HUD funding for?
Can't use HUD funding, but that doesn't stop.
It can be land bank.
Erie County land bank.
It can be land bank, but it, but yeah, eminent domain's off the table. You're not allowed to, to secure the property.
Yeah, I don't see that affecting a lot.
Right.
Question on who to be lead. Explain real quick what the process is for getting that money out?
That was actually, the Redevelopment Authority has a lead grant and I believe it was at three million, something like that. Three million dollars. It actually expires December thirty-first, I think. And I think there's gonna be another round of, of the application coming out. I believe they're applying for it again. And so what they do with the lead grant, they look for families or with children who are under six and those families.
Are they local people or people who come to the...
Well, I think they market, they market it, you know, their commercials and different things on...
Especially the kids.
Mm-hmm. If you're under six, then, you know, this money's available to, for them to come in and lead proof your houses, to do the lead work for it and also do rehabilitation to it.
Deb, do you have any numbers? Because this has been going on for several years, right? Are we...
This is the, this is the last year that we'll be actually funding the lead program.
Do you think we're gaming out there to the extent that we're cleaning lead out of these old rooms per se?
Definitely.
So you got a separate grant outside of this for lead?
The Redevelopment Authority did.
Yeah.
Okay. So our public service activities, community policing is not, is actually a part of the public services as well as the summer rec program. So this line item is actually seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-one cents. And the max that we can take is twenty point nine six or seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So we're pretty much at our limit for that.
And that was one area where we continued to fight and we got that reversed because they, they were trying to cut that to fifteen percent and we were adamant that we were grandfathered in, was it nineteen eighty-three?
Correct.
Where they froze your public service funding percentage. They kept saying that we were not...
And you were able to find the documentation?
We were actually able to find the paper. It was quite yellowed.
Yes, paper.
That's why we keep paper. They kept saying that Erie was not in their database and we knew that we had gotten a waiver from them almost forty years ago. And so we were able to produce that fortunately. And so that's why we continue to, to challenge a lot of what has been brought to us because we feel justified in a lot. And this was one of those examples. Fortunately, we were able to get that public service cap back up to almost twenty-one percent, which directly, those would, those would be cuts directly to the neighborhood centers and the community centers. It would hit them hard, so we're happy that that number was restored.
Okay. So for this year, we have the summer rec programs. JFK, eleven thousand, six oh five. BTW, twenty thousand. MLK, twenty thousand. Trinity Center, nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-five cents. Boys and Girls Club, fifteen thousand. The Urban Erie Community Development Corp. had actually submitted a summer rec program. But we, what we did, if you look down, we actually combined their numbers because their programs actually year-round. So we, instead of having two programs and having additional work, we just combined it.
My question is JFK, MLK, and then Human Resources?
Those are after-school programs.
After-school?
Mm-hmm. The Human Resources programs are actually after-school programs for BTW, MLK, JFK, actually Trinity Center.
Thank you.
The GCAK and Home Services is for seniors where they go in into their homes and give them housing services. The Multiculture Community Resource Center is actually a workforce or job training program. Nurturing Hearts is a after-school...
Self-esteem.
St. Martin's Center is for direct services for their counseling, housing program, but they're directly related to, I think, mortgage services or something.
They didn't get anything though in the previous year?
Uh, last year they did not put any, an application in. This year, I believe their funding was cut, so they did apply.
You're not aware of the taxes?
Right. And they didn't receive the full amount because actually I think one of the positions that they were requiring was for receptionists and we can't pay for receptionists and also for, I think part of the salary was for some rapid rehousing. They didn't, they had, they actually applied for rapid rehousing for emergency solutions, but their application requirements didn't agree with what we're required to put in it. They didn't get any money for that. So that's why it's forty-five thousand. The Erie County Human Relations Commission, we have to do some fair housing things. And so this year we only allocated five thousand dollars because they did not, they're not gonna expend the eight thousand dollars that they have this year. Yeah.
Let's remind everybody that that was a political appointment to head the HRC. What a surprise. They had money that they didn't spend. Interesting.
That was one area that we continue to look at. I mean, we want to fund that, but you have to spend your allocations. You can't let...
They're improving though.
How do you know?
Cause I go to their meetings.
Are you talking about the guy who the director is improving? The person who got the job so he could pad his pension?
Somebody you don't like, huh?
No, I don't even know him personally, but it was a political thing to put him in there. How do, how do you know that they're improving?
At the very last meeting that I attended in February, it was a combined meeting with the Advisory Board and the Commission.
Okay.
And everyone at the meeting was complimentary to the fact that they have improved with moving their caseloads and they commended...
You, you do know about the political stuff that went on to get that guy the job though, don't you? I'd be happy to send you the information.
I'm over that and I really feel like they were going to be here on Saturday, but now because of the parade being canceled, they're not going to be there. They're trying to get the word out that they are a viable commission. People don't really understand the meaning sometimes.
They were a viable commission too when they had a qualified person who was recommended to become the director and that person was turned down because she was not, didn't have the political strings to pull. So I, I'm not kicking on you. I'm just saying that, to me, it's not a surprise that you have an organization that put a political person in charge and that they didn't spend the money. So would you follow up and ask, would you be so kind as to ask the director why they did not spend that money that they had? Would you be able to do that?
I will say that they've had, I wanna say, three public events over the past year. One at the King Center and one at the Alaska Library where the state officials came to Erie and gave presentations. So I guess that's, those are two things that are new, that the head of the State Commission came to Erie and part of the Commission in Pittsburgh and Philadelphia. And so those are things that are happening within that group that are new and are better worth the risk.
Okay. And that could be the result of the advisory committee though, not necessarily the person who got the political job, so.
They, um, also, they were running space, so they have their own space now at the Renaissance Center that they've moved into and have redone. So I'm surprised that, I don't know, maybe they couldn't use the money for...
The money actually is for commercials and fair housing activities.
Which they're working on as we speak. They, they had students do it.
He told me, yeah, he told me that, but the commercials...
Yeah. And my only point was, you know, one of the questions, one of the things we look at when they meet with us is where are you with last year's budget? And so I, you know, I didn't wanna get into a broader discussion about this, but at the time that we met with them, I think all of the, all of last year's budget was still untouched, right? So I mean, we have to take that into consideration.
It's this year's budget. It is untouched. And I believe the last year's budget, they didn't expend all of the dollars.
Right. So I mean, we have to take that into consideration when we're trying to figure out where we're gonna allocate.
The commercials should have probably been running at least by January.
The problem is they're doing it with school students who, you know, when you're in a school system and the kids only have so much time and things like that, but it's ready to be pushed out if they haven't already done it.
But, but that's why. We didn't want it to look like we're just chopping their budget. I mean, you know, we need to see the...
I'm sorry. I know, cause I, I'm sure it is awkward for you to bring those things up, but I have no qualms about doing it because I have access to every story that was written about how that thing went down, so anyhow.
All right. So the Urban Erie Community Development Corporation, as I stated above, we actually combined their summer rec and their regular after-school program together. The YMCA, Y Teen Center, fifty thousand dollars. The Youth Leadership Institute at Erie, five thousand dollars. The Erie City Mission Human Resources, fifty thousand dollars. And the U.S. Community for Refugees and Immigrants, twenty thousand dollars.
Is that the one that I said?
That's the one with the, the foreigners.
Yeah. They had a meeting yesterday to back and forth with it. Really interesting initiative, so.
So on the next page, we have the GCAK Weatherization Program, six thousand dollars. The Gannon University Small Business Development, fifty thousand dollars. Servery, Emergency Repairs, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. Paramount Pursuits LLC, fifty thousand dollars. And Manus Enterprise, seventy-five thousand dollars.
What's Paramount Pursuit?
It's a, um, small Manus.
They, um, they work with minorities, immigrants and refugees, those low on the socioeconomic ladder, to bring them in and mentor them one-on-one and also put them through a cohort to help them open a business, you know, identify what it is that they're passionate about and what kind of business they may wanna start. They've had a lot of success in Beaver County and also in the Pittsburgh area. Yeah. If you wanna take a look, Michael, here's their, here's their information. They have a lot of success stories for people, you know, they had originally developed some programming. They were gonna do a cohort. As people started coming in, they realized that they needed a lot of other services to bring people up to the level that they needed to be asked to be able to actually open a business. And so they went to the one-on-one mentoring and providing all those services for folks so then they could take advantage of the resources. They build a team around the people to ensure that they're successful, not just, you know, sending people through a cohort, opening a business and then you're on your own, but really shepherding them through the process.
They bought a house in Erie?
Yes, they did. They were so impressed with what we're doing here.
Why is there such a big difference with Manus? They asked for two fifty and gave them seventy-five?
We're not exactly sure if all of the items that they asked for...
Well, a lot of, a lot of the requests, we could tell right away, wouldn't be eligible.
Well, what is Manus Enterprise, I guess, too, for that matter?
It's the, it's the Sunoco Station on Twelfth and Fringe. It's a minority-owned business that in the past have, they have received CDBG grant support from the city and they're requesting that again. It's been maybe ten years since the last time they...
Probably ten years.
They're just, to keep their business afloat?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Well, to, to make improvements to the, to the, to the business.
Facade things.
Signage.
Lighting.
Right.
Make a few robberies.
But, but, but the initial request of two fifty, they had that broken out into categories and, and right away we could tell that, you know, a significant amount of that wouldn't be eligible, so nor, nor would it be, in our opinion, appropriate to assist a business with that much of our funding, so.
Don't tell you, I just have one business we can pick to help where there's a bunch of thousands of businesses that would probably be wanting to improve their facade or, you know, or at least a hundred of them below Twenty-Sixth Street per se. It just seems like a chunk of change just for one business to, cause it's something we've, I haven't seen we've done before. You said we may have done it ten years ago. It just seems like it's...
I believe it was a hundred thousand roughly ten years ago that, that...
It was, and it was under the facade program.
Right.
So any businesses can apply for this?
So the...
I mean, they can apply.
They can apply, whether or not we're gonna take a look at it, whether or not we think it's an eligible activity. We're...
They will do job creation.
Right. There's gonna have to be low to moderate income creation and retention with this. And just because we're, we're proposing an initial budget of seventy-five thousand does not mean that we have, that we're ready to say that's going to be eligible. We're willing to take a look at it.
I believe in the past, we did do like that housing on Parade Street.
Correct.
That was in one of these CDBGs I heard.
Probably under home funds. I'm not sure what project that would have been, but yeah.
So initial presentation, so exactly what, what does seventy-five thousand dollars...
We're not exactly sure what items will be eligible. We're still working on that, um...
They'll give us a determination as to what is eligible and then we'll work with the manuses.
So with that being said, and just say fifty thousand of that seventy-five is eligible, that's where you get the leftover reprogram money.
Right.
This year we did add some.
Yep.
Now, if I'm a, a restaurant owner and I'm a minority, if I come to you, do you give me a list of things that I could apply for, or do I just bring you a list and then you go, uh-uh, no?
Typically, you'll bring us a budget and then we will run that past our CPD director in Pittsburgh to see what they deem to be eligible and not eligible.
Based on money?
And, and so they'll, they'll indicate to us, much like ten years ago, there was a list and certain things like the tanks were not eligible. I, I don't recall exactly what it was, but, you know, some of the things they had listed in this request were just clearly, and we knew they weren't gonna be, be okay, so.
And, and Chris has other resources beyond this to help small businesses get started. There are different, he's got the flagship fund.
That where Paramount steps in to help the folks?
Paramount will be working, yeah, with, with people, but like for Chris, for businesses that are already established, there's a flagship fund. They can come in and apply for a grant for five thousand dollars. That can be used for SOD, for consulting, for web development, for signage, any, anything. It's a one-on-one, a one, one-on-one match and they get reimbursed. So if they apply for five thousand, they have to spend ten thousand, bring in the receipts and then Chris can reimburse them the five thousand. But then there's the Commodore Fund too. I should let you talk about that.
No, it's okay. You're doing fine.
The Commodore Fund then, like a larger organization could apply for that if they're gonna be creating jobs. And there are different levels for that. And then SOD and, I'm missing one.
Training Assistance Program that we just launched that we're talking with a couple of people. Training Assistance Program that we just launched, that, uh, we're talking with a couple businesses on now, but that's, we're getting off track on that. But, you know, we, we continue to try to build out, internally build out capacity that's not necessarily tied to all the strings that this funding is tied to. And I think that additional flexibility, um, is a good thing, it's already shown to be a good thing. We're getting projects done because we're able to pivot quickly, quickly, as opposed to what this funding is, is like, so.
And that's not taxpayer money, that's interest that rolls off of Chris's revolving account.
It's all internally generated, so, yep.
Alright, on the last page, actually, it's just the total of the three million five sixty-two four ninety-six, uh, and twelve cents. Are there any questions on the, uh, CDVG proposed allocation?
I think we're asking, as we're going through.
And then there's still public hearings, right?
There are two public hearings, one, uh, they will be actually on Tuesday, April seventh. One will be at ten a.m. and the other will be at six p.m. And we look to, um, then notice for our proposed, uh, projects will go in the newspaper on Monday, March sixteenth. There's a thirty-day comment period and we will be, um, submitting a resolution to City Council on April fifteenth, no.
Eighteenth.
April fifteenth, I believe.
Right, first and the fifteenth, so it'll be on the fifteenth.
Uh, asking, uh, um, getting permission to submit our plan to HUD by May fifteenth.
Obviously, just so people know, you work on this, this is, people start their applications and...
December thirty fir, December first, uh, to January thirty-first, uh, is the application period.
This isn't something that's just...
No.
No.
A couple weeks, just so people know.
Yeah, we, and we met with, um, all of the sub-recipients, they have a chance to come in and, and I think you, you were in some of those, right? I mean, you're, you're invited, yeah, Kathy, you're invited to sit in and listen to them, you know, give us some justification, give us a budget. Because I think having that open discussion is, is very beneficial. It's beneficial to us as well to, to get a sense of their capacity, are they gonna be able to carry out what they're proposing, so. I think it's, I think it's gone well that way, so.
I do have a question, uh, which I know that, you know, all the outside people came in. Does the city come down in the different departments, like the, uh, the Development Authority and other? Do they come in and you justify, uh, and do their, uh, their...
The redevelopment did, we didn't, not for curb pets or streets or anything like that, they didn't come, but the redevelopment authority did come down. We also have, um, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars in, uh, home dollars and they're not on those sheets. And so, this year, we will be, uh, allocating additional money to HANDS for the Midtown Revitalization. They are doing a new construction project over on Thirteenth and German, I believe it is. There'll be ten new, um, special need, one bedroom apartment units, I think it is. They have the numbers, the numbers are, uh, ten, but the number is off.
At least we know.
If they want copies?
No, they have this here, the number is off. So we're gonna actually give HANDS a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-eight, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. There is other money that is in prior years for this. The total cost for this project, I believe, is, I think it's, is it three or four million dollars? No, maybe it's more than that, I'm not sure. But they have other, they have PHF, PHFA dollars in it and, um, other monies in that. And CHO, uh, HANDS is actually one of our, um, CHODOs, Community Housing Development Organizations, and we actually have to have, um, a CHODO activity every year. We have to allocate at least fifteen percent of whatever our total, uh, home dollars are, so that a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars will take care of what our, um, CHODO commitment is. We also will be allocating dollars for the city homebuyer, this is down payment assistance, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It'll be a new homebuyer program for, uh, people in the city of Erie who wanna purchase a home. We look to give them up to ten thousand dollars for down payment assistance.
We do this in the past?
This one right here, the city homebuyer down payment assistance is actually, it'll be a new program.
So, this is an area where, um...
And they're getting ten K?
Up to ten thousand.
So, this is an area that I think we need, we need to become active in. I'd like to see funding go directly to, uh, homebuyers and encourage homebuyer, home investment in the city. Uh, this is just the start at two fifty, I envision growing this, um, after the first year, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that we stand up the program in a responsible way and that we're actually gonna be able to do what I think we're gonna do. Coming in and directly assisting the homebuyer is obviously gonna encourage them to buy in the city. Um, I think it's going to help stabilize the residential market in the city. I envision getting to the point where we're gonna do fifty of these a year. Not in our first year, but that's my goal. And it's gonna have an impact on the housing market.
Buying instead of renting.
That's right, that's, that's correct. And I think, I think this is an effective, one, the other reason I think this is an effective way to deploy these funds is because I think we can do it in a way that's gonna help most homeowners avoid PMI, private mortgage insurance. So it's almost as if you're getting two forms of assistance for one.
Can you work with the banks then?
Yes, yeah, so I've been talking with agents, realtors, banks, um...
It's the price range.
And so, it has to be, uh, you know, we have to follow the HUD guidelines, so it's gonna be on, it'll be on homes that are ninety-five percent of median home value or less, and it'll be for folks that are at eighty percent of median home, median, uh, household income or less. So we are, uh, for, 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 for a family of four, to give you an idea, for a family of four... Yeah, for a family of four, eighty percent of median income puts them around fifty-seven thousand. Uh, for ninety-five percent of home, median home value puts them, for the city, puts the home price at around eighty-five to ninety thousand. So, there's a, a large swath of homebuyers that we're gonna be able to assist and you're gonna be dealing with folks in a category that are obviously, um, you know, they're paying rent or they're, they're, they're aspiring to become a homeowner. And I think, uh, we have a responsibility to encourage that investment in the city and I think it's a good way to deploy these funds, as opposed to just throwing home dollars at one or two large projects each year. And I think we're gonna be able to reach, like I said, my goal in the second year, Deb wants to hear that, fifty homes a year. Um, now, I'm gonna be directly working on this as well, as, as our home coordinator, who's Veronica Fields, most of you know. So I'm excited about it, I think it's gonna make Erie very competitive. Um, I don't see a lot of other cities doing this, I see a couple. But, uh, the plan, again, right now, is to be able to, uh, offer up to ten thousand dollars, uh, direct assistance and, and it'll take the form of soft subordinate debt that will be forgivable over five years. So you'll have to be a resident and a city resident for five years, and that'll be slowly forgiven over time.
That figure could go up if it's successful.
If it's, if it has the effect that I think it'll have, then we can fund it more. Uh, I wanted to start off with a responsible amount, uh, because we haven't done this before. So I don't want to take up all the bandwidth with a new program. And I also have to make sure that internally, we have the capacity for this. This is gonna take a lot of time, it's adding a lot of work to the staff, a lot of work. These are not easy to do, um...
Now, Chris, if you got the realtors involved, explain the program to them, you've got some pretty good people out there that could bring you the...
There's already a lot of positive feedback on this. And, and I, I just know, personally, in my background, being in real estate over the years and finance, I, I just, I suspect this is gonna have a very positive impact on our home market in the city.
So this goes with this?
Well, home is a second bucket of HUD funding, it's CDVG and it's home and it's ESG. And so, home is the second bucket.
Anybody talked to our thirteen firemen? So, firemen moving in the city?
So how are we getting the word, word out?
I really don't want the word out quite yet because I don't wanna disrupt the market. 'Cause here's what I'm worried about, and I know we have to talk about it tonight, but this is something that the mayor and I had started discussing almost a year ago. But I, and we plan on publicly rolling this out. Really wanted to wait until June because I don't want somebody who has a deposit on a home right now to back out of that. And we, and we really could disrupt the city's real estate market by coming out too soon with something that I can't fund until July and August. I don't think it's appropriate, so, um...
That's why dissemination should be primarily through the realtors.
Right, well, I mean, and we're gonna publicly, you know, I mean, we're obviously gonna be happy to, to roll this out. So, um, you know, we'll, 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 we'll roll it out at the appropriate time, um, I think it's a bit too early.
Well, we gotta make sure it passes too, you know?
That's right, it's got, well, it's gonna be submitted in our, our plan to HUD and they have to approve it. So this is all preliminary, this is not, this is not approved.
I see that as like the best investment I've heard all day.
I'm excited about it, it's something that we've been kicking around for, for a while now. And, um, when I look at these dollars, I try to think, what's the propensity to get these spent? The velocity to get these spent and the quickest way to get them to the, it's an overused term, but to the grassroots. And, and this, this is directly incentivizing investment in the city and, and I think it's gonna have an immediate balancing effect on the residential market. You start talking about fifty homes, uh, in Erie, that size, and at any given time in Erie, you've got maybe, maybe six hundred residential listings. So, it's large enough to have an impact. And if, and if it can lift folks out of renting into homeownership and also convince them to stay in the city for at least five years as you slowly work off that subordinated debt. Initially, again, it's, it's in the form of a soft subordinate position on the house. Get them to set roots down in the city, uh, I think it's gonna be a good thing.
A little more sense of pride when you own or you're paying into something, you're going to own and something you rent.
Exactly. And it's also, and I'll just, and that's why we're, we're designing this to be directly down payment assistance and not closing cost assistance, it's a difference. And, and sometimes people say, what's the difference? You gotta bring a certain amount of cash to closing. To me, it just makes a difference when you are, when you're able to demonstrate that you're walking into this new investment with a cushion of equity, you're gonna approach this differently. If you're just covering costs and you, and it just feels different, I think. And I want them to walk into this new investment that they're making with, with a layer of equity and a layer of ownership already from day one. They may take better care of that and they may appreciate that better. And part of this too, is that they do have to have cash in the deal. It's gonna be similar to an FHA deal where you gotta have three percent into this. Because I also don't wanna incentivize people who are not ready for homeownership. Even with assistance, there are people who should not do this too. And so, unless they can come to this deal with three percent, probably not who we ought to be assisting or at least encouraging to take that dive, yeah. So, I don't know, we'll see, it's the first time that we've built this mousetrap.
Should there be training?
There will be mandatory counseling.
Showing, teaching, a lifetime and how to take care of...
It'll be mandatory, that's written in the, in the home guidelines, yep.
Okay, um, the next item is actually the city homebuyer, um, and rehab program. We're actually administering this program right now, this is actually for first-time homebuyers. This is down payment assistance, closing costs and rehabilitation. For home, your house has to be up, be co-compliant. And so, this program right here, individuals could receive up to twenty-four nine 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 for household. We're allocating a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine twenty-one for that. The next program is, uh, city housing rehab, this is homeowner rehab for people who already own their home and they may need some co-compliant items. They can receive up to twenty-four nine 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 for this. This is actually a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we're allocating. And the next item is city administration. We are allowed to take ten percent admit for, um, this activity and that's eighty-three thousand one twenty-one. So the total for this is eight hundred and thirty-one thousand two eighty-four.
Once again now, and there again, a year results, well, the city housing rehabilitation, we've had that in the past.
The redevelopment authority used to actually administer that program.
Took that, we took that in-house last year.
So there's still the income of, it's on program, like it was...
You have to be income qualified in order to participate in the program. Your income has to be eighty percent of the median and below.
Is what Veronica's doing a part of this?
That's an excellent thing, I, you know, she's doing an excellent job.
She's doing a terrific job.
Yes.
She's, uh, I've, I've only gotten positive feedback from, uh, just the way that she interacts with prospects. I see when they come into the office, um, she knows the program from start to finish, um, and knows how to get these deals done. And, um, so we've got a really good person running that program. And, um, I'm about to put more on her plate, but that's okay, so.
Alright, our last program is actually the, uh, Emergency Solutions Program. Uh, this program is for emergency shelters, I don't have a sheet for that. And so, uh, the allocation is actually based on the number of actual beds that the agency provides, uh, per year. And so, for emergency shelters, we have, um, Community Shelter Service, which will be receiving thirty-two thousand one hundred and eight dollars. St. Patrick's Haven, fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. Safe Net, fourteen thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. City Mission, thirty-five thousand one hundred and seven dollars. The Refuge, twenty thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. Community of Caring, sixteen thousand four thirty-eight. For a total of one thirty-four, four, four-seven. Uh, we have some transitional living facilities, Mercy Center for Women, fourteen thousand nine forty-four. Safe Net Bridge House, eight thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. Safe Net TLC, four thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, for a total of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Then we have the, um, GCAC, um, does rapid rehousing for us and this is, um, individuals who are literally homeless. This program provides first month rent and security deposit. And that is eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We have to actually use a certain percentage for the, uh, emergency solutions for rapid rehousing and I believe the percentage is sixty, um, sixty percent and then we're allowed to use, uh, for administration, seven point five percent. The rest is used on emergency shelters and transitional living, so that's the total for that. As I said before, it's based on the actual number of people who go to that facility per night and we normally use, uh, for this year, it'll be, uh, whatever that amount was for June thirtieth of, uh, two thousand nineteen. So that would have been July one through June thirty.
So has that increased since last year then or...
About like ten thousand dollars. Any questions?
Have they increased it, ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
Any questions overall?
Or on this or overall?
I know this isn't your thing, but I know Kathy and probably everybody about this email from somebody like taking city council to task because we haven't done anything about coronavirus and we didn't cancel... because we haven't done anything about coronavirus and we didn't cancel the parade. But I've also seen some stuff on social media, well, can city council help people with, you know, if they're gonna be evicted? So I'm not asking for that, I'm just asking, is there like a coordinated response center for what the long-term impact will be in terms of, you know, if somebody does lose their housing because they've lost their job? Is there, is the county gonna be like a coordinator in terms of, not just the immediate response, but helping people if they need, you know, if we end up having extended unemployment or anything? I'm just wondering, is there a single point of contact in Erie County for what's gonna be happening, maybe immediately, but also longer term, in longer term look? I mean, I don't know if, you know, shelters might need, if we might need more shelters, but that's kind of.
Liz pointed out a good thing, I just got a thing, they wanted to know if we were like Guantanamo, which is no longer used in the Milk Tree Mall, could that be used as a hospital? I mean, that, this is serious, like people are really concerned about this whole thing.
They're looking at us even though I don't think we're the right responders.
Exactly.
But we could help communicate.
It's important to refer people to the Erie County Department of Health.
Okay.
They have a skilled staff, they are coordinating all of this, they're talking to the hospitals regularly. We are talking to the health department regularly, but we're, we're taking their lead. They are one of only ten county health departments in the state, we're very lucky to have them, and they are on top of this.
What about like in terms of social services though? Because that seems to me like something that where GCAC might take the lead, but I know GCAC's also has some.
County also.
GCAC has housing dollars for homeless prevention. If someone's gonna get evicted, they do have dollars there, as well as the dollars that they use for people who are literally homeless, the first month rent and the security deposit. St. Martin Center also has, I believe, homeless prevention dollars also.
But we, we don't have anybody yet who's like the?
Well, and I think to your question, as it relates to this funding?
No, no, not related. I'm just, I'm just, here's some expertise here, and I thought, because we did get these questions.
I mean, the one thing, Liz, that I think you might see, probably not in time for this budget, but we might get a directive out of nowhere from HUD that says, all of a sudden, we're gonna open up eligibility for what is a new activity in response to an emergency, and then we'll adjust internally, but until we get some kind of guidance or?
Right, that's what I figured.
I mean, we really can't deviate from this.
No, no, I wasn't even asking about this on the address.
But I wouldn't be surprised if, if one day we just get an email saying that, you know?
It'll come down fast.
It just says, okay, this is not normal, but we're gonna allow this because of the pandemic.
But the, what's it called, the Erie County?
Erie County Care Management actually has a coordinated entry program. If you call that number, they can actually give you different referrals for different agencies, rapid rehousing as far as rental assistance or different shelters or different things to go to.
And there's also United Way two one one.
Are there any other questions?
What's the Erie County Care Management number? Oh, some people.
Something sheltered, I don't know what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Explanation for many of our questions.
Well, you know where to find us, and we've met individually, so, you know.
Need a copy of that resolution?
I saw the email.
Kathy, it's eight one four shelter.
Yeah.
Good job, you guys.
You must be exhausted, all the reasons.
Adrenaline, coffee, and chocolate. Adrenaline, coffee, and chocolate.